Good evening and thanks for being here this evening. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, be held August 1st, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Let's ask our clerk to take the role, please.
Councilmember DeWillis.
Here.
Councilwoman Duvernay.
Here.
Councilmember Carratt.
Present.
Councilmember Narin.
Here.
Councilmember Palasari.
Here. If here, there you go.
Vice Mayor Wilden.
Here.
And Mary Alinsky.
Here. Thank you. Please stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Councilmembers, do we have anything? No? All right. Well, I'll just share that Mr. Douglas and I got to attend an event by Local First Arizona put on last week out at Page Spring Sellers that highlighted some of the businesses that have gone through a green business boot camp in our area. And our own Anime Cory from the Pines Inn and Suites was one of those folks that went through that program with Local First. But good chance to meet a lot of businesses in the area and introduce Scotty. Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And I don't have anything to report aside from that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Did I steal your thunder?
No, but I did meet with Local First and talked about a lot of grant assistance they're going to be able to provide to us. So I'm very excited about that. So more to follow.
Good. Great. Thank you. Okay, then we have a proclamation up next, and it is Child Support Awareness Month, August 2023. I don't think we'll have anyone in the room receiving this proclamation this evening, but if so, you're more than welcome to come up and introduce yourself. So whereas the City of Cottonwood joins the nation in recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthening Arizona's families by providing child support services to improve the economic stability and well-being of children, and whereas the state of Arizona will always be committed advocates for our children whose safety and security remains top of mind, and whereas a child who receives emotional and financial support is more likely to feel safe and secure and is better equipped with the courage to be their very best in life, and whereas the Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services, DCSS, is robustly committed to putting Arizona's children first and to humbly serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness, as well as being an overall champion for economic growth and opportunity, and whereas DCSS strongly advocates for parenting responsibilities because parents and children benefit when both parents are engaged with their child at every stage regardless of marital status, and whereas DCSS recognizes the commitment of legal guardians who accept responsibilities of children in the absence of parents, and whereas strengthening individuals and families with an emphasis on fiscal responsibility promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be able to enhance their children's future, and whereas Child Support Awareness Month values parents' involvement in their child's lives and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. Now therefore, I, Tim Alinsky, Mayor of City of Cottonwood, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2023 as Child Support Awareness Month. All right. We'll move on then to call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a three-minute time period. So we have yellow forms in the back. If there's anybody here that would like to address the council, you're more than welcome. And if you're just coming in now, you can fill the form out and hand it up to our manager, Scotty, there at the front. And I will call your name and queue up the next person behind you. And just a reminder, we do ask that there's no applause, that you speak directly to council without singling any single council member out, that you direct your comments to us and not to the audience behind you, and that you are respectful. Sharon Bonney, you're up first, and you'll be followed by William Donovan.
Good evening. The drag show performers who rented the Cottonwood Clubhouse reduce womanhood to a feeling, a thought. The drag performers demand we accept their declarations. Some are aggressively toxic males labeling anyone who speaks up as a hater. We heard that term here, hater, at the city council meetings. These are tactics of misogynist men. Toxic masculinity is running the transgender and drag shows for children movement. They abuse real women's natural caretaking and accepting instincts. They get real women to support them, to go to bat for them in the world against people like me who see the toxic masculinity. We saw it play out here in the city council chambers in the aftermath of the drag show in April. Nice women kindly accepting and defending, as women's nature is to do, the marginalized. They didn't see the toxic male we see, who aggressively pushed for his way and condemned and threatened to sue all who didn't affirm his declaration that womanhood is a mere and fleeting thought, a feeling, and not biological, that men can dress as women and dance while children hand them dollar bills, that men can bring minors up on stage to dance with them, that men can hand out gender transitioning literature to the children, and who knows what else, because the city put in no provision for oversight of children at an adult event. I used to be a supporter of the fringe. I went to drag shows and was proud too. I see now that I let them take advantage of my real female natural instinct to care, to accept, to love. Eventbrite lists the dates of the 2024 Christopher Hall drag shows. Cottonwood is not there. That is good news, but not a problem solved. No children may ever be allowed to attend adult entertainment, and adult entertainment includes men dressed as women dancing for dollar bills. The role of the adult is to give children a period of innocence. When will Mayor Alinsky and City Manager Douglas put on the agenda for the city council to vote on the item of no children at adult entertainment? And if anyone who lives in Cottonwood wants to sign the petition to recall Mayor Alinsky, I have that petition. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. William Donovan, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Michael Nocito.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm not going to kick a dead horse. Y'all know why we're here. So my thing is, can we just agree that, can we classify drag shows as adult entertainment? Can we do that? Can't we at least ban kids from going to drag shows in public buildings that are funded by taxpayers' money? The reason I say that is, just a minute ago, you read that with the children's deal, you said that the safety of the children was utmost paramount. Obviously, it's not. So it's either they are or they ain't. Last meeting, there was a discussion about, hey, if we request something to be on the agenda, that doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be on the agenda. Well, that's blatantly false. And I'll go over why. You guys might want to take notes. I'll give you the numbers. You can look it up. But if you look under the mayor's duties, Chapter 2.04.110, Paragraph A, it says specifically, "The mayor may delete or add items to the agenda at his or her discretion, except," except doesn't say, hey, you can decide if you want to. No, "except those items specifically requested to be placed on the agenda by two or more council members." Are you telling me we can't get two council members to say, hey, I want this on the agenda? Really? For seven months, people have been coming here. You want us to quit coming here? Get it on the agenda. Let us come to the next meeting after it's on the agenda, and then we can talk about it, and you can decide what you want to do. But at least that way, you get to vote. You get to decide. Show the people where you stand on the issue. Hiding it from the agenda is not doing you any good. I guarantee it. It's not doing any of you any good. But anyway, if he still decides, because just example, I've got the actual rule here. Okay, the mayor may delete or add items to the agenda at his or her discretion, except those items specifically requested. So anyway, if two people want it on the agenda, it should be added to the agenda. If it's not added to the agenda, and the city attorney doesn't want to do anything about it, because that's their job, they're supposed to make sure that they stay within the ordinance, and if the city attorney doesn't want to do anything about it, then the Attorney General is supposed to be the one to take it up because of the open meetings law. Is that my time right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nocito, you're up next. You'll be followed by Randy Burdette.
I'm going to be brief. Good evening. I'm Michael Nocito, and I live in the Verde Villages. I completely support protecting minor children in the city code from any and all sexualizations. There are plenty of opportunities in this corrupt society for amoral, unmannered, impolite, disgusting, and downright evil behavior in private settings. So permitting venues in a way that is almost endorsing smut, making it available for public consumption by minors, is beyond the pale of any supposedly educated, sophisticated society. Put this on the agenda. Proverbs 1:7 says, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom." So I pray that you guys get some wisdom. Thank you.
Randy Burdette, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Lisa Lemke.
I thank the city council for allowing us to speak here today for the 12th call to the public in a row, about six months now. This is about the all-ages drag show that occurred in the Old Town Clubhouse, a city-run building, on April 8th of this year. Here's a recap of how we came to be here and why. Again, initially around the end of January of 2023, I and many others heard about a drag show that would take place in the clubhouse in April. Upon further investigation, it was found that it was a drag show that had no age restrictions to it, with alcohol to be served, which wasn't the biggest issue, with free HIV testing available. On February 7th, the call to the public meeting was held at the rec center because of how many people that were anticipated to attend, most of whom were there to voice opposition to the all-ages drag show, with some that were in favor of it. It was one of the largest city council meetings attended by the city or by the public in Cottonwood history, which shows how important the issue is to people living in and near Cottonwood. We asked for the issue of the all-ages drag show to be agendized so that we could all have a civil discussion about this with the mayor and city council, and that age restrictions for the show be placed 18 or 21-plus. Two city council members, as per regulations, requested to agendize the issue. Despite it being their right, the mayor or some others refused to allow it. This issue could have been resolved within the first month, but because of the mayor's and other city council members' refusal to agendize the issue, here we are almost six months later. It is apparent that drag shows/ drag queens are adult-oriented shows/ adult entertainers. Since those are the type of shows that they do most or all the time, Christopher J. Hall, the event organizer, was seen on video and drag dancing provocatively in front of children in Lake Havasu back in February on the same tour that took place in April. It's obvious that he does adult-oriented shows as a norm since it appeared like it was second nature to him. He had also threatened to sue the city if they restricted children from attending, which would be a frivolous lawsuit and defeated eventually. This is what some risk management funds are for, so why not use them to protect children? Despite what some may claim, this isn't about anyone's rights, the Constitution being hateful and intolerant, et cetera. This is about protecting children and minors. Parents bringing their underage children to these shows to have adult entertainers dance for them does not make it okay. All we have asked this entire time is for age restrictions on these shows to be placed, and the chance to discuss this with the council and mayor. Mr. Hall will be back soon, so I hope that we have a discussion, we may have a discussion on this and resolve this issue once and for all before then. So as to avoid having to badger you, the council, again, just to get you to protect children in the future. Thank you.
Lisa Lemke, you're up next.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Lemke. I've been here many times before, and I'll continue to be here because I am passionate about this. I have three grown children. I have grandchildren. It breaks my heart to have to even be here again today, and I'm not a public speaker, but I will continue to speak. I will be heard, and so will the people behind me. This is too important to let go. It really is. I am begging you. I am strongly requesting you, get this on the agenda. We deserve to be not only heard, but taken seriously. As I'm sure you're already aware, there are three Arizona statutes, I'm not going to read the numbers, three Arizona statutes that you are in violation of by having public events with minors. Three Arizona statutes. And I don't really care about Katie Hobbs. This is Cottonwood, Arizona. And I do care about Cottonwood, and I am asking and expecting a decision for an ordinance to be written and codified that would keep children and minors away from these shows, and to put these shows in the category with striptease, whatever other lewd show they want to put on that has to be not on public property. You know, I care about this town. I care about children. I care about adults, and this is not helping anyone. The transgender agenda is strong, and I realize some of you may be afraid, but I'm not afraid. I care more about the children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other folks out there that would like to fill out a form and address the council? All right, we'll close the floor then and move on to approval of the minutes of the meeting of May 2nd, 2023, the special meeting of May 8th, 2023, and the work session of May 9th, 2023, and I'll motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion. Councilmember Narin seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes are approved. We roll into the consent agenda then. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. Two items. First up is Resolution Number 3181, Appointment of an Associate City Magistrate. Item two is Resolution Number 3185, Extension of Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023 Contract Between the City of Cottonwood and the Greater Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. Is there an item that a council member or citizen would like to have pulled? All right, I'll motion then to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion. Councilmember Carratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. Let's get our clerk pleased to read Resolutions Number 3181 and 3185 by title only.
Resolution Number 3181, A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, Appointing Ronald Ramsey as an Associate City Magistrate and Establishing His Term of Office. Resolution Number 3185, A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, Extending the Fiscal Year 2022/2023 Funding Agreement Between the City of Cottonwood and the Greater Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, thank you. All right, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, possible legal action. Two items up this evening. First is interview of airport commission applicants. Good evening.
Good evening, the hearing council. Amanda Wilber, HR Director. I have a short presentation for you before we start interviews for the airport commission. So for this airport commission appointment, I just wanted to give you a brief summary on what the airport commission does in case anyone from the public is interested in that. Our airport commission--
Ms. Wilber, can you speak up a little bit more clearly into the mic?
Sorry. Not so great at that always. Our airport commission is made up of five voting members, and each serve a three-year term. Four of the members have to be tenants or leases of the Cottonwood Airport or have working airport or aviation knowledge, and the other member does not have to have that knowledge or be a tenant, but that member would have to live within the incorporated city limits. So we have two current openings right now. At least one of those must be filled by someone with aviation knowledge or someone who's a current tenant or lesee of the Cottonwood Airport, and then the other member may be a resident without that aviation knowledge. So I did put on here our current members so you can see what the other members make up of our commission is. Most do not live within the city limits, but they do all have aviation experience. So for this process, we posted the openings on June 2nd. The posting closed on June 19th. We have done a blind review with our typical committee, which is made up of our staff liaison, in this case Jeff Tripp, our airport manager, our council liaison, which currently is Vice Mayor Wilden, Joyce Oswald, who is our citizen review member, and then our commission chair, which in this case is Jim Moni. Tonight is council's interview, and then we would expect that the appointment would happen on September 5th coming up. So with that, we have four current applicants for these two openings, and all four have confirmed that they would be here this evening to interview with you. So unless you have any other questions for me about this opening, we are ready to interview for this process.
Okay, great. Any other questions, council, for staff? No? Okay. Thanks for the background too. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, well, without further ado then, I just want to say thanks to all the applicants who applied. I think you're all here in the room this evening. Appreciate your time in being here. We're going to interview you in the order, I think alphabetical order. So Mr. Baird, you'll be up first. We have just three simple questions for you, sir. And really, really do thank you for your previous service and for your being here this evening.
You bet.
All right. So I think you've been through this before, but first question up is, please tell us how you would assist the commission in furthering the city's strategic plan to have the airport be an economic driver for the city?
The airport at the current time has leased a considerable amount of its property in past years, many past years in some cases. Much of that property is under long-term leases. The way I see that we can help the city is in the future. Leases will be based upon current market rates with annual reviews or semi-annual reviews so that rates keep up to the market level. That would benefit the airport much more than anything else at the current time. The other way that the airport can serve as an economic contributor to the city is to attract more businesses that are aviation-oriented, not necessarily people who fly airplanes for a commercial living, but people who manufacture goods and services for the airport in general, for the aviation community in general.
Great. Next question is, what expertise would you bring to the commission to assist the commission in providing advice and recommendations on airport-related matters to this council?
I started flying when I was 15 years old. Have done a lot of flying. I retired as a lieutenant colonel in the Civil Air Patrol. I served on the Kona International Airport, which is now the Onoson-Zuka Airport, on its advisory committee, on a major expansion of that particular airport, as well as problems that it had with neighbors and so forth and so on. I also currently serve on the airport commission as the non-tenant representative, representing the public interest.
Okay, very good. And the last question is, based on your understanding of the current airport commission, what does the commission do well and what can be improved on?
I think the commission does well with the agendas that are set forth. Personally, I believe that what we need to do is to be able to interface more with the council and more with the city manager about making future plans as to how to run the airport, how we handle matters at the airport, and look forward to some strategic planning. I mean, currently, we have some 30 requests for hangar space and some 20 requests for tie-down space. The airport doesn't have the funding to construct those hangars. We have to come up jointly with some sort of innovative way that we can do that and create revenues for the airport through the leasing of those hangars to people.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baird. Appreciate it very much.
You're right.
Thanks. Okay, Rick Duff, you're up next.
Hello again.
Same three questions.
Well, you know, I heard the questions, and I sort of--
Took some notes.
I think I can address all of them in my written--
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, if there's anything missing, I'll stop you and we'll take you back. Okay.
Absolutely. You know, the last time I was here, you asked me what I would do to make the airport better, and I didn't answer that well, I don't think. So I'd like to just go through this a little bit and then touch on, I think, everything that you've asked, but please interrupt, feel free to interrupt anytime.
Okay.
My background was serving on boards, whether with a car club, business associations, companies, or the Yavapai County Workforce Development Board, was similar in one way. Being on these boards was more than coming up with ideas for others. On every board, there was some homework that we had to do. Members did things such as event planning and execution, information gathering, conduct informal surveys, make presentations as requested by the board, review and make input to plans and documents as requested. This was not a full-time or burdensome task, but a little effort was expected and appreciated.
Mr. Duff, I'm really sorry to interrupt you, but I kind of want to be fair to all applicants and ask the same question consistently.
Ask the same question.
So I just, are you answering the second question, which is, what expertise would you bring to the commission? I just want to be fair to all applicants.
Yes, that was the first. I have them a little out of order. Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just--
Absolutely.
Trying to get some clarity. Okay.
And you have my background that I gave you.
Certainly. So I'm sorry. So you're answering the expertise you have. Please continue.
With other boards and being more involved. And I think that's a good idea to be involved with the council and such. But, and I can only speak for me, but the city is-- for me, but the city has already identified short, short and long-term plans, and so I'm now in the, what can we do to improve and do things better? But the airport is a key priority, according to the strategic plan. With prioritizing infrastructure and such, other priorities include tourism, events, medical and recreation. All of that can tie to the airport. The strategic plan also identifies the airport as potential economic driver, and that aviation developments are encouraged, travel and tourism and such. According to the plan, the city is open for business, and that's what I think we may be missing a little bit, treating it more like a business in terms of what can we do for the stakeholders, everybody involved, and that, in my opinion, is to help the, the airport staff, assist the airport staff. They're already busy, they're already working hard. I think what they need is a little assistance, and I think if they're maybe, and I don't want to be negative about the board at all, but the fact is that, that maybe we could help those folks do their job and clear the way for them. That's what other boards have requested from me.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, are we good?
Well, taken together, I guess, you know, there's a lot of work, and I'm up for the job.
Right.
And just as a matter of full disclosure, if, if I win the Mega Millions tonight, you might not be able to find me.
That's fair.
Just to be clear.
That's fair.
Okay. Any questions for me?
No, we're good, Mr. Duff. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, Lisa O'Brien, you're up next. Good evening.
With respect to your questions, as far as economic development, I, when I go past the airport, it seems almost like it's a ghost town. So, and I know I'm, I'm taking pilot lessons right now, and I need to go over to Prescott because there's very, I mean, Lenora Aircraft has a very small office, but I would like to see more activity in the airport for training and that sort of thing, because I think with the population growth, we'll have more potential pilots who want to learn, and driving over to Prescott isn't ideal, so that's one thing. As far as my qualifications, I don't have, I mean, I'm taking pilot lessons, but I don't have Airport Commission experience, but I am educated, I've been on a homeowner's board, so I understand the process, how it works, and working in industry for quite some time, 36-years, I, you know, I'm a team player and I, I would make a significant contribution, I think, and, you know, with sound judgment. And as far as what the commission does well versus poorly, that I don't know how to answer because I'm, I haven't been involved with it. I'm not, I don't want to just sit here and spew. I, I don't know.
Okay.
So that would be something I'd have to learn.
Okay, and have you, have you watched or sat in on any of the-
I have not.
You have not? Okay, okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, and John Sutton, you're up next and last.
Good evening, sir.
Would you like me to repeat the questions? Would you like me to repeat the questions?
Yes, I would.
Okay, great. So first up, just thank you for applying, we appreciate it very much.
Sure.
The first question is, please tell us how you would assist the commission in furthering the city's strategic plan to have the airport be an economic driver for the city?
Well, I would get involved with exploring new opportunities to bring income to the city. I come from a small city, the same size in Virginia, same type of traffic pattern. I talked to the owner of the airport today, who's a friend of mine, and he's got the same challenges you all do. And there we have had events go on with the public, making the public more aware, and they have brought some income to the city. You have vendors coming there. But beyond that, I would try to contact other public-use airports to see what they have been successful in, and try to take advantage of whatever we think could be successful for, for this city. It's a, it's a tough thing. The biggest sources of income probably would be rental of hangar space, but you're kind of landlocked here, limited by how much space you have, and you gotta look for other opportunities, and that's what you're doing.
Okay, great. All right, and the second question, Mr. Sutton, is what expertise would you bring to the commission to assist the commission in providing advice and recommendation, recommendations on airport-related matters to this council?
Well, I have aviation experience. I've been a private pilot for 40-years, a commercial helicopter pilot for 30, and own my own government contracting business for 30-years in Virginia, and I like to solve problems, and I like to look for opportunities. And I see that there's some opportunities here, that's why I'm volunteering. I like the city a lot, and I'd like to try to help the city in some way, and I think the plan that the city has is absolutely awesome. It's new to me, I just read it this past week, but it shouldn't be. The plan, I should have been aware of it, I went to the, soon as I came here, three-and-a-half years ago, I went up to the airport and met with pilots and had coffee with them and met the airport manager, and I knew nothing about this. Been back up there a couple other times, knew nothing about the plan. So I think letting the public know more about this plan, and it is really, it's really a great plan, and there's some opportunities for execution of this plan to make it work better for the community.
Great. Think you kind of touched on that third question, but I'll, I'll repeat it anyway. It's based on your understanding of the current Airport Commission, what does the commission do well and what can be improved on?
I think I just covered that.
Yeah, I think you did too.
I think, I think they, I read the minutes, some of the minutes, and I was really impressed with the summary of the minutes that the commission made from each of their meetings. I thought that was really great, showed me they've got a lot of expertise and interest in doing the right thing, and I think it, I think it can go well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sutton, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks to all of our applicants, you really had outstanding resumes, it's nice to see so much talent wanting to volunteer here for Cottonwood, so thank you, and we'll make a decision at a future meeting. Okay? All right. Okay, ready to move on, counsel?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Next and last, under new business, is Resolution Number 3184, Request Approval of a 75-foot-tall Montopine Cell Tower Located at 127 North Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tina Hayden for Community Development. I'm, the applicant has proposed a 75-foot tower on the area on Main and Coconino Street. Currently, we are here to request that you approve a tower over 60-feet in height, up to 90-feet is allowed with council approval in the zoning ordinance on a C1 lot. The site acreage is .8 acres, the tower, proposed tower is 75-feet. It will be in a 35-by-45-foot compound. There is no existing proposed work to the current existing building. There is opportunity for future colocation, and then Ordinance 730 became effective May of this year, and this allows a tower to be located closer to a lot line than its reclining On July 17th, the Planning and Zoning Commission did make a motion to recommend approval for the 75-foot-tall tower. That motion passed 5 to 1 with vote. The findings were, the commission finds that the additional tower height is the least intrusive means of filling a significant gap in the wireless communication provider's coverage within the city. This is the site plan that was proposed. These are the areas for entry along Main Street here and then on Coconino Street. There are five buildings on site, one non-exclusive tech parking area, and then the location of the tower compound. These are the elevations, the before and after, viewing on Coconino Street looking south. Right here is where the tower will be, behind the other tree here. This is, again, on Coconino Street looking southeast. This is the view from Main Street looking east. And back to Coconino Street looking southwest. This is a closer view of the site plan. The area in green is the perimeter for the tower compound. The blue circle is the 20-foot fall radius that engineers have projected, the tower will fall in case of extreme conditions. The purple circle in the center is the tower base, and then on the right and bottom of the screen, that is the east and south lot lines. As you can see, that 20-foot fall radius is very close to that lot line on the east. These are, the applicant has provided additional justification for the location of the tower. On the bottom left, the arrow right here, this is the existing T-Mobile site, this is the proposed location. This is the current coverage map. On the top right, we have a legend here, green shows indoor coverage, yellow shows in-vehicle coverage, and red shows on-street. Right here is the proposed tower, as you can see, we have very, no indoor coverage is existent, and very little in-vehicle coverage. The applicant was told to have a area map of a 60-foot tower, and then their proposed 75-foot tower, because we are trying to justify that additional 15-feet. Right here is the proposed tower, the red circle is the area of coverage, as you can see, there is plenty of indoor coverage and vehicle coverage indicated. This is the 75-foot-tall tower coverage, this is the area of coverage at 60-feet, and the blue shows additional coverage expansion. That is the end of my presentation. I do have the applicant here to answer any questions. I did also want to say that we have only received one letter of public comment, and then on the planning and zoning meeting, we had one person speak out, both in opposition of this tower.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from counsel for Ms. Hayden? Sure, go ahead.
The range of coverage, those big oval circles and so whatnot, what does that equate to in miles, feet? What, what is that coverage? Is that a, a two-mile radius that, that, that range will cover, the red circle and the blue circle?
Counselmember Palasari, I can give you a rough idea, I, this is the area of Main and Coconino. I think up here is the area of Old Town, I am so sorry, and right up here as well. So just kind of a general idea, right here is 89A. As far as actual, you know, mileage range, I'd have to get the applicant up here to answer that.
It's not necessary, you answered my question.
Mm-hmm.
The other one, colocation, define that for me, that's a new term for me.
Colocation is, the tower is built up to a certain height to allow for future cell carriers to put their equipment on, to expand their coverage within the city.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, go ahead, yes?
Three questions. 60-feet is what the other two towers are now, correct?
Vice Mayor Wildin, the other two towers at, near the slag pile and then also near Mingus High School, those are 90-feet tall.
90, okay. Will this improve the overall coverage for users?
I, judging from the coverage maps, it looks like there is quite an expanse, especially in the Old Town area, so I would say just from this, yes.
And last question, maybe the, the owner of the, the builder of this, what cell companies would be using this? Do they know that yet?
As of right now, it's T-Mobile. As I said, there's opportunities for future colocation, I haven't heard of anyone else wanting to colocate.
Okay, so T-no, T-Mobile has the other one at the school, or it doesn't matter where, but-
It's AT&amp;T.
Oh, was AT&amp;T? Okay, I thought you said, sorry, T-Mobile. Why can't they use the other, any of the other two towers?
I, I can actually answer these questions. I have, I have a lot of experience in this type of technology, and I apologize for jumping in there, but essentially, these are proprietary towers that initially usually go in, and so, you know, they actually rent space from one another, and so they end up working together. So this one's actually starting out as T-Mobile, and I can certainly see this as, you know, being a tower that, you know, multiple cell providers would use, and so it kind of conversely, so that some of the other towers, let's say it's AT&amp;T, they'll do it in the reverse, and so that's why you end up getting better coverage, even if you have the same cell tower in the same sites. You don't add cell towers, eventually you start getting some better coverage with the other providers, it's as they're being added on.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, counsel, would you like to bring up the applicant to answer any other questions?
Just-
I'd like to meet him.
Okay, let's bring up the applicant.
Hi.
Good evening, and I forget your name, but you'll introduce yourself, so.
Hi, my name is Shannon McCray, I work for State 48 Development Consulting, and I'm here representing Vertical Bridge, happy to answer any questions that you guys have today.
Did you have anything to add to the questions that were already asked?
I think that Tina did a great job of, you know, explaining everything in her presentation. In my opinion, that, that kind of covers all the bases, unless you guys have any additional questions for me.
Okay, any further clarification, counsel?
Do we know what other cell companies are using these towers?
I do not know for the surrounding towers, who are currently colocating there. For this tower, the initial tenant, as mentioned, will be T-Mobile. Typically, within like the first year, year and a half, multiple carriers will start colocating, so, could be Verizon, AT&amp;T, et cetera.
It seems like Verizon has the best service.
In this area?
Yes.
Potentially, yeah. Yeah, we would have to run the data on that, this is specifically for T-Mobile, but they should be colocating probably within the next year, would be my guess.
Okay. All right, anything else, Councilmember Palasari?
So this is a tower that your, your client, your, who you work for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is them, and, and they're going to benefit financially from having this tower erected and these, so, these cell companies coming in, correct?
Yes, so, yeah, so the way that it typically works is, we're a vendor that's hired by Vertical Bridge, who is the tower developer. What they do is, a cell company like T-Mobile in this instance, reaches out to a tower developer and says, "We really are lacking coverage in this area, we need better coverage, can you build a tower for us?" The reason why a tower developer such as Vertical Bridge would put up a tower is because it allows for multiple carriers to collocate, so, you know, they'll be getting rent money from the different carriers that will collocate, such as T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon, et cetera in the future.
Who owns that tower?
It'll be Vertical Bridge.
Okay. Anything else, counsel?
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you, Ms. McCray, appreciate it. Yes.
Okay, I move to approve Resolution Number 3184 for the proposed 75-foot-tall cell tower at 127 North Main Street. tower at 127 North Main Street.
Second. Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Palisari seconded it. Let's get a roll call vote.
Councilmember DeWillis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Duvernay?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Palisari?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wildin?
Yes.
And Mary Linsky?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
All right, great. Let's have you read Resolution Number 3184 by title only, please.
Resolution Number 3184, a resolution of the Marin City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving a proposed 75-foot tall cell tower at 127 North Main Street.
Great, thank you. Okay, I have motion to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Carratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember DeWillis seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. See you.